I'll call the meeting to order. As Chairman of the Select Board, due to COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is meeting electronically utilizing the Zoom platform. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access this meeting using Zoom and instructions are provided on the Town of Lee's website at leehnh.org. If anyone has a problem with access, please call 603-659-5414, extension 312. Please note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Actually, it will be a little bit different than that and I'll explain that in a minute. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, also please state whether or not there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Select person Casper.
Here and alone.
Select person Bugby.
Here and alone.
Good. Select person Brown here and alone. So we will move on. Call the meeting to order. What I would like to do is since everybody, meaning Scott, Katrin, myself, we have received our list of goals and objectives that we each submitted. So I thought we would just start with that list and start working our way down person by person and just have a discussion about each one and how we feel about it. And we'll either agree to say, yep, that's the direction we want to go in, or we'll discuss it, et cetera. Is that okay with everybody?
Sure. And then we can bring up the ones that were things that maybe we didn't touch on that other people brought up.
Yes, I don't have all of those, but yes, we can for sure. We'll go through ours and then we'll go to the outside ones.
Great.
Scott, is that okay with you?
Yep, yep.
All right. So why don't we start, why don't we start with ladies first, select person Casper. Goals and objectives.
All right. I'll just keep mine simple and I think the devil's in the details. So yeah, so the main goals and objectives, I think, that cover all the things that I'm thinking of are communication, a building plan and core values. Some of the ways I mentioned that we could get to some of those goals is for communication to increase our social media presence, to find a timetable and to plan, create a well outlined expectation list for committees and commissions related to scheduling agendas and minutes, work on how committees can more easily work together and create opportunities for volunteering and recreation. For our building plan, I think we need to have a timetable and an expense plan that includes current and future buildings and make sure that the projects work together and are able to go forward in a timely manner. And then the core values, I think the most important thing is for us to create a survey that helps to find the core values of the town so that that's defined by everyone. That's it.
Already I can see that we're going to have a couple of duplications. It's going to be interesting to see because we can combine some of these. Obviously, they fall in each other's categories. So.
I went through the other people, the peoples in the towns and a lot of these things were, you know, just a lot of the same sort of ideas. So I think that they can go into the same basket very well.
And by increase of social media presence, what do you mean? What is you expect from that?
I think the most important thing because of where our town is ending up anyway would be a Facebook presence. So we have a lot of small, different committees and organizations and departments that have their own Facebook page. But the thing is that they're only visited occasionally because you just have that small group that's following that one, that one thing. So if we actually had a central location and had town information, it doesn't necessarily need to be something that's open up to, you know, a ton of conversation. It can be just a resource for people to find information and then they can jump off from there to the different pages. Or there's a lot of ways to do it, but I think the challenge is that a lot of, although Facebook won't cover everyone, what we're doing now doesn't cover everyone. And so if we have the webpage and we have these meetings and we have Facebook and, you know, we can talk about other options. I mean, I'm not up for a TikTok page yet myself, but you know, open to ideas. I think it's just important that we have, you know, a way for all this information to get together and for us to share it quickly and easily with the town. And this is one area where a large portion of our population does regularly go. And because you don't have to go look for the information, it actually comes to you when you're on Facebook anyway, it will increase our awareness in many areas.
Okay. But we do have a Lee Facebook page, right?
Not for the town.
No.
No?
Well, the highway.
The town, yes.
The highway department has one, the EOC, the fire department, the police department, conservation commission, recreation commission, sustainability committee.
Right. Historical society.
Right. So the way the algorithm works is that you have to have activity to get seen more often. So historical society is a great example of a place that the more people have engagement, the more they see of the posts. So by having one go to Facebook page, you actually increase everybody's profile. If you're putting information from the town and we're not talking about making a ton of new content, we're taking what we already have on the webpage, we're taking, you know, it's already being produced and then it's possible we could do some more public interest pieces. If there's a volunteer group that wants to help make that content. So options.
And you agree, you would be the flag bearer for these, right?
I would love that.
Well, I think it's got to come out of this office.
Oh, no, absolutely. But what I'm saying is she's going to be the one, these are her goals and objectives and she'll be the one that manages them relative to respect to keep them moving. That's.
Yeah, check the timetables and things like that. Sure.
Scott, you have any comments on it?
I think, well, it's my number, one of my number, well, it is my number two. But I think it's part of the strategy we have to adopt in terms of getting as much information out as possible. For the people that go to Facebook, Neighborly is very popular. And Ms. Thompson also reposts things that, you know, we've posted in terms of agendas and things like that. So it'd be nice if it came from us, but it fulfills another niche of people that don't necessarily get information about the town. So there's other populations out there that still will not be getting information from the town.
We'll need to work on that.
Yeah. So I think this is like another avenue to get information out to people. So I'm in favor of us pursuing it.
Okay. I agree completely. Selectman Bugby, would you like to star on yours?
Oh, can we talk about more about hers?
Absolutely.
We don't want to leave her there. We only did her number one.
Well, it was a pretty good one.
No, we went through, we talked about a timetable.
Oh, we did?
Yeah, but then I also mentioned working on committees. I think one thing that is really important is that we make sure that we have expectations for the committees and commissions as far as, you know, you really do need your agendas by this day. You need to have it scheduled. You need to double check maybe. And then you need to make sure you have your minutes posted so that anyone from the town can be like, oh, I want to know what's going on and they can go there. Because what happens is if you're frustrated a few times, you stop looking. So if a couple of groups aren't doing that and somebody's looking at those groups, they might, you might lose that person looking for information another time. So it's just really important that that's all there and it's also legal responsibility. So we want to make sure everyone's doing that.
So Denise and I both have struggled for years with this.
Right.
And I have to say, it's not that the committees and the commissions don't know the rules and the schedules and when they need to do things by. That's been communicated many, many times.
But it hasn't been done.
Well, right. So I'm wondering what your thoughts are on how to ensure that they follow the timetable and the rules and so forth that we already have in place.
I think that we, you know, I'm happy to contact people if that helps. I'm happy to have a sheet, a rundown of, you know, who hasn't done it then and have someone that checks up on that. I don't know what we need to, do you have a suggestion that would be helpful to make sure? Because I see you're doing it on that side. I want to make sure that those committees really understand that that's no longer a flexible issue.
That would be great because it's, you know, again, it's been a big frustration for many years.
Well, I can be really annoying. So I feel like I could just annoy it out of everyone.
More annoying than Denise?
Yes.
You also have to say, and Denise knows who these particular committees and commissions are. Some are better than others. Others are not very good and some of them are pretty good. So let's not throw out the baby with the bathwater. So people that are doing what they're supposed to be doing, but there's a few bad apples, if you will, in the apple barrel that, you know, don't do what they're supposed to do in a timely fashion. And basically, I don't think, we don't have any real control over them because they're volunteers. The only thing we can do is just not reappoint them next time. But then how do you say, okay, who's responsible for not putting the minutes up in a timely fashion? The whole committee?
Well, it's the. No, I think it's the chairman of the committee or commission that's responsible.
Okay.
And I mean, I don't know that we need to go too far down this road, but it is possible to remove a member of a committee or commission if they're not, you know, doing what they're supposed to be doing. But yes, so let's suppose that you have a chairman of a particular committee and they never get us the information to post meetings on time or the minutes or any of that, then absolutely you just don't reappoint them the next time.
So I guess one thing we need to do is let that person or let everyone know that if committees and commissions are not doing their, you know, what the RSA say they have to do in terms of postings, that they will not be reappointed.
Yeah, I think that's true.
But that flies in the face of, we have a hard enough time getting people to surf on these particular groups and now we're taking them off because they're not, so I don't know.
It's like a two edged sword. I think there's carrots and sticks and I think it's not all about punishment. I think it's for a lot of committees, it's just that that hasn't been, they for whatever reason haven't understood that expectation. And I think sometimes when you explain, other committees don't get their things looked at because people are going to look for years and they're not there. And I think if you can start to see how you're part of a greater community and you feel that responsibility, I think there's always somebody in a group that's willing to say, hey, I know on the committee, I was on the long range, I'm on the long range planning committee for the school board and they, we have a rule that if it hasn't been done properly, we are not allowed to meet. And everyone follows that. Oh, you know, we didn't post it right. As much as we have this meeting set up, we didn't follow the rules and so we can't meet. So I just think that it's about just a culture change. It's not, it's not a punishment necessarily, just a culture change. This is important to us. We really do want this information because it matters. And maybe it's just understanding why.
Well, I think it's, and Julian, Julie and Denise know this better than I, but you know, it's not usually the posting, it's the minutes afterwards that's the problem, I think.
It's sometimes the posting.
Oh, really? Oh, my goodness.
Sometimes.
That's really bad.
But usually, and Katrin, we've, you know, if someone for whatever reason doesn't get us the posting for their meeting, we absolutely tell them, you can't have a meeting.
Right.
And sometimes they don't have the meeting and sometimes they go ahead and have the meeting anyway. And you know, once that happens.
Denise knows that the THR C doesn't have their meanings if it's not posted properly. She knows that quite personally.
Yeah. I think that we can strategize and if there's a particular group that's having a problem or there's a challenge, then let's, you know, work with them. And if it turns out that, let's figure out what each individual group's challenge is and then deal with it. But I think if there's an expectation and everyone understands that expectation, then, and it's coming from the select board, not just from, I think that that's going to help. So I think if we make it a value, it becomes a value that we need to enforce and help maintain.
All right. And in terms of your number two, that's kind of like my number one, I think.
Yeah, I think so.
All right.
We'll talk about that together. And then I do think that it's time for another survey of the town. And I think it's important to make sure that we do that in a way that isn't leading or, you know, like I remember when that survey was taken and we just had a lot of certain issues and I think there's different ways to ask questions. So I was going to say, because we, other people did talk about a survey, it wasn't just me. You know, maybe that's something that we asked for some people that are actually experts in that area that might want to volunteer from the town, you know, have you worked on surveys? Do you know how to ask questions of not leading ways and really get honest answers? And I was thinking maybe we could all work on some areas that we want questions in and then bring that together, you know.
Well, the other thing that I've always had problems with in terms of surveys is because when we do surveys, no matter what the question is, it's the usual suspects. We get the same 40, 50, 60 people that answer those particular questions. And is that statistically valid for those 60 people doing directions? Maybe the other people don't really care. I don't know. But when you base plans on that small number of people out of the 4,000, whatever that's the residents of Lee, that's not very good. So it's not even.
That needs to be met and handled and it needs to be discussed. And I think Facebook and other areas where you change the usual suspects around does matter. Sorry, words.
Well, the thing, if you can do it, you know, one of the things, there's tools out there like Survey Monkey. If you can send out something and have people just respond online when they're in the heat of the moment, when they see the information versus, oh, we're going to send you something and then you have to fill it out and then you have to send it back.
Bingo.
That starts to, okay, well, yeah, I'll do it next week or, you know, oh, no, I forgot about it. Oh, I don't want to do it now. So.
Meet people where they are so that you can, you know, get the answers that you really want and let people know that you really are interested in decisions will be made based on that. And, you know, I think we'll work on, I think that the team, if we created a team that worked on it, I think that they would also have ideas for how to manage that differently.
Well, I like that idea too, because it's, we've always had a problem in terms of getting what people want. And the flavor of the town has changed significantly. You know, it used to be in olden days, you know, all the farmers came and, you know, blah, blah, blah. They were all Republicans and now it's definitely changed. People want different things. They don't have time. So you just kind of have to engage them, like you say, where they are and get their particular ideas. Because when we do something they don't like, they come out of the woodwork, which is good. But we shouldn't have to do something that they don't like to get them out of the woodwork.
Exactly. And I think that's the thing too, is that, you know, people don't know that they want, that their voice matters and this is important unless we, you know, make sure we show them. And, you know, I'm not elected to put in, you know, my ideas and, you know, what I want to do. It's what I'm representing, the people of the town. We come together to represent the people that live here and we can't do that if we don't know what they want.
Scott, you want to jump down there and start on the town hall renovation project?
I think we just did. I think. But I agree with her in terms of her number two, in terms of defining what those particular plans are and how we're going to pay for them. The thing, we looked at the CIFP as a way to, we can use that to help us determine what we're going to do and how much it's going to cost and how we're going to pay for it. The other thing that's part of that, which is part of that survey that we were just talking about, is understanding what people want. If they come back and say, we definitely don't want to spend any money on town center or buildings or whatever. Okay, we've got our message. But we understand what they're looking for, what they value, what they want to put their money toward. And until we know that, it's kind of hard to move forward with anything. So we can only do the best we can. And in terms of number two, we just talked about that extensively.
Yep.
Communication, so.
Okay. I will go down my list. First one being interested, encourage interest in co-op with neighboring towns. We talked about this before on a couple of occasions about increasing, if you would, our communication with our surrounding towns, what kind of problems they're having, what kind of solutions they might have for them. So this was just, this is just a, if you would, knowing, knowing our neighbors and seeing, who knows, there might be some opportunities that we create and doing some joint purchasing, et cetera, for some capital equipment. But I don't even know the names of the Selectman and Madberry or wherever. So I just think we should, we should get to know them a little bit. It's a social action more than anything else. I would like us to start getting some monthly or bimonthly meetings with the, town administrator, with our, with our other managers and so on, and just have a luncheon and a discussion and just talk about what's going on and see what questions might arise from them for us and so on. It's just, just to increase, if you would, our visibility with them and our concern about them and what problems they might have that they, they're not vocal about until they get in a setting where they feel comfortable enough to do it. As far as the number three, when I look at the tax situation in Lee, it seems to me as though one way we may be able to address some of the taxes is to increase the economic development that's within Lee. We have 594 acres of land that are owned by Lee. Would it be possible or probable that we could use some of that land to attract businesses, whether it's logistic ports or whatever? I don't know what the names of them are. I'm just saying, it would be nice if we could increase our, increase our economic development activities here in Lee and help cut into the tax, to the tax burden. A quarterly review of the master plan, I think, is absolutely necessary. We never, and I think it's fair to say never, sit down and review, where are we on the master plan? What's going on? What are the issues? What do we need to be doing? As far as schedules in the master plan and things to do in the master plan? We don't really pay any attention to our master plan and I'm simply saying it should come before us on a quarterly basis. We should look at it, take action items from it and manage the master plan. We just talked about the survey of Lee residents. This came up with me. It came up because I got a copy I found in my files of the master plan that we did, I'm going to say, what, four or five years ago? And it was, it was, it was a very extensive master, or a very extensive questionnaire that we sent out. I was wondering if maybe we should use the same questionnaire to go out to the Lee residents now and see what kind of response we get as compared to what we had in 2015. I believe that our demographics have changed substantially relative to the number of, if you would, younger couples that we've had move into the area. Their wants and needs going to be different from, I think, what we received 15 years ago or 10 years ago. So that was just wanting to find out how the residents and the businesses feel about what we're doing and where we might be able to improve. A Lee phone directory, for whatever reason, is just something that's sitting in my, in my. Every time I look for a phone number for somebody, I have a problem with it. Finding a phone number for this person in Lee, especially if I don't know their address. I don't have this. So I just thought it would be good if we published a Lee phone directory. We could include other things in there, obviously, not just businesses, but doctors and so on and so forth on colored pages. We could use some of the trifolds that the committees put out. The Ad Committee puts out a very nice trifold on the farms in Lee. So we could, we could roll some of that in there and just have a, nothing major, but a nice little Lee phone directory that says, here's Lee, here's the people. And part of that, which also goes along with some of Katrin's efforts is to establish a welcome wagon. Now, you know, I know that we've actually talked about this in the past, the long ago past. Some of the ladies of the town talked about putting together a welcome wagon, but we never did it. My history is, we moved several, several times, my family did. And almost every time, and it was all up and down the East Coast. So almost every single town we went to, after we were there about three or four days, there would be a knock on the door and there'd be two or three ladies standing at the door with a basket. And it would have some cheeses and some, you know, flowers and whatever. And they'd come in and introduce themselves and talk a little bit about where we lived and et cetera. I thought that that would be nice to start in Lee. Some of Katrin's words was, you know, we want to be, we want to be a friendly town. We want to be outgoing, whatever town. So, you know, I think the welcome wagon does that. It also gives us the opportunity to meet the new people coming into town. It's a, yes, they have three kids, they moved here from wherever. They're going to be going to middle school or senior or whatever. Gives us an idea of what our population, what our population is doing and who's coming to Lee and why. You know, we can ask those questions subtly. So that's pretty much, that's pretty much it.
That's a whole bunch of great ideas. Should we go through them each individually?
I'm sorry?
I said that was a whole bunch of great ideas and I, should we go through them each individually?
We can, but I don't have the details for each one. But, you know, some of them step on, not step on your toes or whatever, but they're.
They work together.
They're joint, exactly, exactly. So I think for many, many bullets on these pages, we are thinking alike.
Yeah, which is good news.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
I have a question about one of the things, working with other towns. One of the things I was asked when I was running was about the Stratford County, I'm forgetting the name of the group, but it's a, I've heard a lot about. Thank you.
Stratford County Regional Planning?
Yeah. Is there a reason that we're no longer part of them besides, I hear it's a little bit expensive?
Karen Rossi, that it, typically it's the planning department that works most closely with regional planning commissions. And Karen Rossi convinced the board that we weren't getting enough bang for our buck, that every time we went to them to get their help with doing something, it cost us money in addition to what we were paying them every year.
Oh.
So she didn't think it was worth it to keep paying them the, I can't even remember now, $5,000 or $8,000 a year.
It's like $5,400, something like that.
There's a certain number of things that they do for the communities that they just do because they get money from the state and the federal government. So.
Grants and things like that.
Right.
It's my impression, this is just my impression, years ago, for the money that they charge us, because it's based on population, we would get certain services from them. And as things progressed, you know, those services started costing us money. And at some point Karen says, well, geez, if I'm going to have to pay for these things anyways, why are we paying you the annual membership? So we stopped paying the annual membership and they still do services for you, but they charge you a little bit more money. And at least cost effective wise, it's cheaper for Karen to do it that way than to pay their yearly dues. So I think their business model changed.
Okay.
And I think it's more cost effective for us just to do it this way. So.
So if somebody has a real, I've had a couple of different people from different groups come to me and ask about this. So if they really do have a thing that they feel would be cost effective and would make up for that expense, they should let us know. But right now, we don't see a reason for, we didn't feel that there was the cost benefit ratio. But right now, we don't see a reason for, um, we didn't feel that there was, the cost benefit ratio was good enough. So I, I, I know that now, that helps.
And Karen can give you more information. It's, I vaguely remember it's like they charge us ten dollars more an hour for their services or something.
Okay.
To make up five thousand dollars, that's significant amount of time.
Yeah.
So.
And then to not have to free anyway, so yeah, that's, that's right.
And just to give you an example, the, the Conservation Commission is looking to get a map done of all the town properties, town, uh, forest properties. There's like four, I think. So, um, they're all on different maps, they're all on different scales, done by different people. So we're looking to have somebody just take them and collate them. And she got a quote for them for four hundred dollars to do that.
Oh, wow.
You know, so if, if they weren't charging us by, you know, you know, in terms of, if you remember or whatever, that probably would have saved us like forty, fifty bucks.
Okay.
That's, you know, that's like a hundred of those particular things, you know, and
We would need a lot of use in order for that to be valuable, so something to, okay, something, just something to think about, because I know, you know, talking to other towns, I agree on so many levels. I think there's ways that we can work together, share expenses, share, you know, a, a lot of different things. Employees, if we need to have, it would be nice to have a backup for, you know, what happens when our police chief is on vacation or, I don't know, whatever. Do we have options for how that all works? How do we make it so that everyone's benefiting, I guess?
Yeah. Well, we've done stuff, the whole thing with the transfer station, possibly Madbury using our transfer station. So it's things that we can explore.
Exactly.
The group, the financial group that met with the school, um, looking at particular things that we can do is, um, towns in the Oyster River School District. You know, those kind of things. So that was just starting when COVID started and then it's kind of been put on hold. So at some point that will come back. But the groups that were there, Madbury, Durham, um, the school district in Lee, they were seen to be very receptive to having the conversation about, you know, group purchasing or, you know, whatever it happened to be, because they're all doing the same thing we're doing. Trying to save ways to save money and give the services that people expect from us, so.
Absolutely, and we're already used to working together with some towns anyway, so why not open those doors. I love the idea of meeting with other, um, select people because we have, I, I was approached by some people in Durham and, um, you know, would love to get together and maybe it's something we have to do all the time, but I, I think it'd be really nice to say, these are some of the things we're dealing with. Oh, we don't have a problem with that, we'd love to help, or, you know, we've been struggling with that too. Maybe we could come up with some new ideas. I know that the departments are doing that anyway, so it just makes sense that as select people, we would also.
Yeah, yeah, it's good to know who they are. Like in Madbury is Janet Wall and, uh, Mr. Green, I forget his first name, uh, and then Bruce Hodgson. So, you know, if you know the people, you can call up and say, hey, what about this?
Exactly.
We know Ton Selig. I don't necessarily know all the people on the Durham Council.
Yeah, I only know a few, so I think we all could benefit.
Yeah, and they're, they're nice enough people. They're amenable to talk to us about different things and stuff.
I know, but are we nice enough? I don't know. I mean, really?
I don't know. I'm nice enough. I don't know about you, Katrin.
All right, well, why don't we be the neighborly, Lee people that we are and, um, you know, give them an invitation and see if they'd like to, at least, at least have one to start. I mean, that makes sense. Yeah, good idea, Carrie.
Okay, all right, we'll take, uh, let's, we'll get started. Uh, I suggest that we, uh, be sure that we put these goals and objectives, uh, on our to-do list and that we look at them, let's say, every what, what, once, once every four meetings or once every three meetings, something like that, to just give a quick status on where we are. If we're having a problem, we need help from, uh, let's say, somebody else on the board, whatever, to help get something done. So let's, let's look at doing that.
Love the quarterly reviews idea.
The community, yes, the communication, the, the communication in the meetings between us especially are gonna be very important to keep the goals and objectives moving.
Yep.
Can we talk about the rest of your items, Mr. Brown?
Uh, let me see, where am I? I got to establish a welcome wagon.
Yeah, we, we did number one.
We're now reviewing all your ideas.
I talked about the lunch meeting. I talked about economic development, quarterly reviews of the master plan.
But we wanna talk about them.
Oh, you wanna talk about them?
Yeah, just like, yeah.
Okay.
So, number two, in terms of doing this particular thing.
Yes.
So I, I'm amenable to it. I will be able to attend, but I'm amenable to it. Um, anytime you can have those conversation points with those particular people, that would be great.
Hmm. There might be some opportunity days that you have as a holiday. I, I know flight safety, they're not three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So, so, you know, we can find a day where you can join us.
All right, well, that'd be far and few between, but in terms of the conversation, uh, yeah, it sounds like something that hopefully the department has, I would assume, would be amenable to that.
Yeah.
But we will not have Denise planning because the last time she didn't provide cookies when we had lunch, so.
So, just, just remember that if there are gonna be two of you, it's a meeting.
Right. So, so should, should we, since Mr. Budby can't always be there, would it make sense to have one person at different times? Would it make sense to try to only do it when Mr. Budby can be there? How do we, how do you wanna do that?
Well, I mean, that's We'll try it, you know, let's try it, experiment it a little bit. Maybe we just rotate between the three of us or, uh, as best as Scott can do and see how it works and then we'll make the decision. That's what this whole meeting's about, is let's see what we've got and what we can implement and see how it goes.
I think that's a great idea.
Number three, you threw out that the town owns some land. Most of that particular land, Mr. Brown, has easements on it, so we can't do anything really with it.
You said most, not all, right?
No, 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 I said most.
Yeah. What land are you thinking of not keeping conservation land or, um, what are, what are you, is there an area you're thinking of?
Because we don't, all the business areas up in the traffic circle, I don't think we own any property up there. I think we own a little piece off the traffic circle. I think it's like point two acres or something like that.
Might even be point zero two acres.
Okay, okay, zero two, I take that back then. But other than that, there's nothing up there that, you know, the town owns that can foster those particular things.
Okay, but that doesn't mean that there's no other opportunities out there if we start looking, so I'm gonna start looking.
Okay. You, you look and you bring it back, but, um, just, yes, I think we, that, that will go along with our core values and how, you know, what kind of, um, economic development we're looking into. You know, if you put a bunch of homes in, then that's gonna increase our taxes. Um, if you put businesses, I think that does help towards the taxes, but if you put too many businesses in, then now our, um, all of our fire and, um, police budget has to increase. So we just have to be aware of what we're getting into.
Okay, I, I don't expect to get IBM in there. I'm looking, I'm looking for some smaller companies, whatever, uh, that we could accommodate and at the same time, uh, help, help put some money into the tax coffers.
While we're talking about this, can I throw an idea out there? I've been looking a lot into, um, electric vehicles and learning more about what that costs and those expenses. And one thing that would be interesting to be aware of is a lot of people can't travel from Massachusetts and, and Boston and those areas very far because there's no place to charge a vehicle. So charging a vehicle takes about twenty minutes. If we had a charging area in, you know, that traffic circle area, you now have a captive audience for twenty minutes to go shopping or do whatever, and that might add some, you know, some bustle to that area. So might be smart strategically for, you know, for a lot of reasons.
When we did the town center, that's one of the things Bambi Miller checked into and she found, I don't remember the name of the company, but there's a company you can work with. They provide all the funding and it's really their thing, but maybe we could facilitate with some business up there in terms of them providing the space to do it and then engage this particular company to actually provide the charging stations and stuff like that. But that's something the town could maybe work on to bring those two parties together.
I love that, because we have some empty businesses and, and buildings just waiting to have some businesses go into them already, let alone, you know, building new, new ones. And I think that that would change that dynamic.
We could do a Lee country club, put a golf course in.
Well, just remember, you, you've also gotten by on the Rusty Lantern, when the, when the water line goes through, there's, there's like a strip mall kind of thing going behind there, so. When they're doing that development, maybe you could work with them to see if you can get, um, a charging station built into that particular complex. You know, Karen knows the guy who owns it, so maybe she can have a conversation with him and maybe we can put those two people together and see if we can get a charging station.
All right, it's, it's just an effort to see what we could do, that's all.
Yes, correct. And then weigh the pros and cons and the expenses and all those things and then make a decision.
What do you think, Scott, since, since, uh, you have more opinions, I'm sure. Publish a Lee phone directory?
Um, I, okay, um, you don't get a phone directory, Mr. Brown? I get one sent to me every year from the phone company.
Oh, you do? I don't.
Yeah.
They, they still distribute phone books.
Yeah, they do. You have to ask for it, but they will do it.
Oh, I never asked for it. It just shows up on my doorstep. I don't get one.
I've got a, I have a thing, you know, there's a form you fill out and they send you one every single year. If you don't want it, you know, you don't sign up, so.
So the way that, do you do that through consolidated?
Uh, well, it was fair point way back when.
Right.
But yeah, yeah. So
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna explore it and we'll see what happens.
Okay.
Mr. Brown, I also like to say, you know, I know at Massway, um, we had a thing where we would have something that we, we printed. It was paid for by the advertisements um, in the actual, you know, so you get it paid for.
Right, exactly.
Promote local businesses and only people that chose to be in that directory were in the directory. So, you know, there's, I know that the, um, Sustainability Commission is working, committee is working on something, you know, to let people know about the different businesses in town. And I think there's other people that are trying to reach out. Maybe that's something you could bring some different committees together to work around. And then each committee could advertise their information and contact, you know, and, and it just might be one of those things that's part of communication in our town. If everybody has that new thing each year, then you have a way to get something in people's hands that they hold on to that has information that they need.
Agreed. Thank you, Catherine. We'll, we'll talk further in a legal way.
Yes.
And number four, quarterly reviews of the master plan. The master plan is supposed to be used by the planning board in terms of making decisions for things that come before them.
So are you telling me that we shouldn't pay any attention to the master plan?
I didn't say that. Don't put words in my mouth. But that's what it's designed for. But I think one of the things that doesn't get tied into the master plan is when we do budgeting each year.
Yes.
Uh, in terms of finding out what those particular master plan goals are. Um, and that, it gets back to one of my little pet peeves, I'll give it to you again. When they do the master plan survey, they get like a hundred responses. Is that statistically well enough to do, you know, what the whole group wants? I don't think so.
Right.
Uh, and it's once again the same thing. It's the same old people, same, uh, answering the survey. So you don't get to have all those particular different views in the master plan. It's this small group of people that respond to it every single time they send it out, so. I don't think that's statistically valid. So, yeah, the master plan has value because different committees and commissions send in what their particular plans are. I value those. But when they say, you know, we got these responses and everybody wants this, well, those sixty-nine people or eighty, whatever it was, that's not what everybody in the town wants. That's just that small subset.
Well, didn't, didn't they mail something to everybody in town for the survey?
And they only got a few responses back.
Well, I, then I thought they got a total of three hundred and some odd responses.
That's not even ten percent.
No, I know, it's, it's not, but it's more than a hundred. Um, would it be worth it to hire the UNH Survey Center?
Oh, look at you. I like that idea.
I mean, I don't know what they charge, but that's their job, so.
Well.
Maybe they would know how to reach out to people that we're not capturing.
The other thing they do is because the survey center does multiple things. They do stuff that's, you know, paper-based. But the thing that they do well is they call people.
Right.
And they have the conversation because at that point you've got them on the phone and they're not gonna hang up on you while some people do. Uh, but then they go into their particular spiel. And that's where you get the best responses because you're actually talking to human being to human being, not a piece of paper, so.
And I
All I said is we should do a survey. I didn't talk about the methodology yet, so no, I agree with you.
And I think that the survey center will also help you develop the survey.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, that would be great. Yep. I think it's important, if, if we post something that says, you know, if we use our social media and our webpage and things and say, hey, we're gonna be conducting a survey in one week, you'll be getting a call from this number or from somebody, please, you know, pick up because there, that's a really important thing. And then we really heavily make that clear. You're gonna increase the number of people that are willing to participate.
Yep. Okay. Because even if you send something like, um, um, a neighborly thing or, you know, this new thing, you're not gonna touch the residents that are older, that don't do computers or social media. You're not gonna get their particular view and their residence just as much as somebody that just moved in, you know.
A hundred percent, yep.
So.
Okay.
Um, and establish a welcome wagon. I was looking that up. I've looked at this before. They are still a viable organization. Um, but you
Oh, like an actual, there's actually an organization called Welcome Wagon?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yep, and they solicit, yeah, go look it up on the website, it's welcomewagon.com, you know, oh, figure. And, um, it tells about them and it wants, you know, if you're interested, um, they set up things with businesses. It's really to foster businesses. But they also provide local information and it's kind of something, you've noticed it, Katrin, on neighborly, you know, okay, I just moved into the area. I'm looking for somebody to do this. Or, you know, my kid needs to go to the doctor. I just moved in. Who's the best doctor? You know, that's kind of thing. At least you can provide, these are the physicians in the area.
So we don't actually have to use an organization called Welcome Wagon. We could say, as a town, we're gonna produce maybe annually a list of, you know, local, you know, the things that people wanna know, like the, you know, where do you sign up for cable? Where do you, who, you know, who, I don't know, whatever you need. That could be something you hand them and then you can hand them a schedule of the different committees. You could hand them, like, have a whole bunch of things that you can give them. And then you could have, um, local businesses be part of that as far as also, you know, having something to offer. If you wanna, if you, if you're, if you sell jam and you want the neighbor to, you know, that person to know you sell jam, we'll, you know, put one in that, that gift basket. Um, so I, I love the idea. I think we would need to have a group that worked on putting that together and then just, you know, gave it out.
Didn't the town clerk used to hand something out? Do they still?
Oh, that's a good idea.
Because that would be the way to do it, because somebody has to come in and register their car and that's how you know who's moved into town.
That's another thought. It's a good idea.
The, the last time I had the Welcome Wagon experience, if you will, um, was when I lived in, um, Durham back in eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-four when we moved in. And a lady came and she had this little basket, probably about maybe eight inches across, and you got to keep the basket. And then the basket was a whole bunch of these, you know, pieces of information about where things were, how things happened. And, you know, if you went to this particular business, you got a free one of this. And she would go through each one of the cards with you and say, oh, this is a nice place. I've been there. It gave you the feeling of, oh, well, welcome to the community. This is the things you need to know.
Yeah.
And, um, and I think businesses like that because it got new people into their thing and got them exposed to what they offer, so.
That'll be our first customer, Scott.
Well, then that means I have to move out and then move back in again, don't I?
I think having a neighbor as, like, making a friend, making a connection, having somebody, um, we just have to know what the rules are, like, you know, how do you, how do you people know? And maybe the, maybe when somebody comes to register, you say, we'd like to um, get you a welcome wagon. Could somebody drop that off or something? I don't know. You have to, you know, figure that out.
Well, I guess I'm picturing it more as information and not that they're gonna get a bottle of wine and
Well, that would be problematic, but
Yeah, so I'm, I guess I'm just picturing that they're gonna be handed a packet of information when they register their car or register to vote or
And I think we're picturing more of like a personal touch, like a way to make somebody feel like they're welcomed into the community and might, now they know one person.
Well, the thing is, if you involve the businesses, you can also charge a small fee to subsidize the particular cost of doing all this too.
Yep.
Right, but you, you have to, in order to send the person to the new person, you have to make the connection as to the, the fact that somebody's actually moved into town.
Which is why that
What I'm saying is, if it's not a direct neighbor, the way to do that is through the town clerk's office.
Well, even better, better thing, I think, that Welcome Wagon uses is they have contacts with the real estate agents and they know who's buying and who's selling. So.
Yeah, whatever's the legal appropriate way we should
It's my, it's, it's my goal and objective, right? I'll take care of it.
Yep.
Well, we wanna work on it with you. We just wanna figure out.
Of course, absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Well, the other thing is, part of this whole thing is, you know, what's our goals and objectives and the thing is. What do we want to accomplish in this particular year?
Right.
Because we have very ambitious goals and objectives, but realistically, what do we think we're gonna, we should be. Focusing on in the upcoming year, because all these things are very worthy. What are we gonna focus our efforts on?
Can I add a couple of things from other people first and then maybe we can make that list? Cause I, I know when we got the goals and objectives from the community, um, I know one person suggested, talked about taxes and of course, I think we all agree. Let's make them as low as possible. I also think cutting. An exact, you know, using a, a number to cut is. Um, challenging, but happy to, happy to go through budgets with anyone who wants to talk about it, but I just wanted to bring that up. Um, somebody else talked about, um, recreation in town and making sure it includes. Um, not just the children that are in school, but also the everybody's age, um, everybody's interest, you know, have to have a variety of things offered. And really put effort into. Recreation as a community because that's one of the number one ways for people to get to know each other and to become involved and that actually helps with the communications.
Yep.
Um. I know that we talked, uh, about.
Excuse me, Catherine, excuse me just for a minute. Did that come up with the recreation committee meeting last night?
Um, it didn't, it did, I think it, I was, I was just going through other people that had sent in their goals and objectives and I tried to narrow down. What everyone had said, just so we didn't. We have ours up on the list, but I didn't wanna forget what other people had said.
Yeah, I just had that conversation with somebody at Town Center today, that whole recreation con, uh, concept because. We've, we, we do a awful lot for little kids, but nothing for the people that are, you know. Our age, if you will, and nothing for older people. We used to years ago, but I think it's based on. The amount of efforts, um, that the recreation commission do and they do what they do very well. But there's only like, what, three or four of them? And that's difficult to do extra stuff with only that number of people volunteering, so.
But, but Scott, I, I gotta be honest with you. I go by the park almost every day in park just to look and see what's going on. And you see a lot of, I'll say, middle aged to elderly people doing Tai Chi. Uh, doing, doing the pickleball courts, et cetera, so, and just walking, you know, so, so there is. There is some activity out there for, if you would, the middle aged elderly people, but you're right, we need to manage it better, I guess, as far as programs.
Cause I'll just put this out there that we spend a lot of money on one particular group. And that's lovely and we can discuss the merits of that and all that, but, um. I do think that if you took that same money and you put it into a person who works part time, that actually. That was their whole goal and their focus, you would be amazed at what we could create. And you could still have that organization would have, would still run and have all kinds of things and they would, you know, they could work together. But you would have a lot more control as a town of, of what happened to your, you know, to your town. And people would have a lot more going on. I know I have done a ton of stuff with the rec commission, committee in, um, Durham. And they offered some really wonderful things and I think. It, it's not that complicated, but it would take somebody that was dedicated and, you know, the organizing and the calling and the contacting. There's only so much you can have, uh, rec commission.
Oh, that might be some, because the, the girl that does it in Durham, she's part time. I don't know if she does part time on. For a choice or that's all that Durham can afford. But that might be one of the things that you can, you know, work with Durham to say, okay, well, you've got her thirty hours. We want ten hours or something like that.
Right, right.
Cause she's good at what she does and they're trying to grow the program, so maybe that's a way that we can have a conversation with Durham to say, you know. Can she help us out for, you know, part of her time? Yeah, I, I don't know if that's possible.
Yeah, and if not, then maybe we find somebody that that's, you know, that's something that they've worked on and, and they can work part time. And then, you know, maybe something that could be added to that list is, is helping with, um, organizing volunteer things when we need, you know, we have a big project. We have to get people on, or they could do other areas that, um, you know.
Yep.
Just, I think it would be a neat opportunity and, and it wouldn't be an expense. We wouldn't, you know, we could just move it from one place to another.
And, and it takes the right kind of person.
Yes.
We've got that kind of person in Dave Sugarman. She is tremendously effective in terms of working with the trails people, so.
Yep, she's amazing.
Needs to be the right personality, um, not somebody that's like, you know. Well, I won't go that way. Somebody that's nice and engaging, how about that?
Somebody incredibly nice and engaging and open minded and willing to take ideas and work with things and somebody who's willing to take some risks, try some new things. And we would just have to support that with, you know, you know, and, and see how it goes.
Cause years ago, years ago, the rec commission used to organize events to go different places, like. To go to museums in Boston or go to a Ritz game or go to something. But they just don't have time in terms of the group that's there now, so. You know, something like that, because when you start doing things like that, people meet people who don't usually get to meet. And you create new friendships and you get to talk to new people, so.
You are, and that's the whole thing, that all, we have to grow our community and we, if we don't have enough involvement and interest, that's because we haven't grown that. So that person would be vital in that area and if they could do, you know, really. Really help reach out to everyone and now all of a sudden neighbors are meeting neighbors, people are talking, oh, did you know this is going on? And now you have a whole different kind of community.
Who is, who is the select board rep to the recreation committee?
Me.
Uh-huh. There you go.
I, I've spoken with some of them and they seem quite amiable to this idea, so I think we could talk to the rest.
Julie, was it two years ago or last year? That's something that we looked at, but then we didn't fund it, a part time.
Yeah, the rec commission floated the idea. Um, but, yeah, the board chose not to fund it. So, let's just say you're taking the tw- the fifteen thousand dollars that we currently budget for ORYA.
Yep.
And we shift that money to a part time rec director and let's just assume that you're gonna have to pay the rec director. Twenty dollars an hour.
Okay.
Uh, and then there's some ancillary costs that go along with that. So that essentially gives you ten or twelve hours a week.
That's excellent.
It's a start.
Yeah.
Well, the only problem I have with that premise is I was considering doing this in addition to, not instead of.
Well, I think that's a debate that should be had and I think that absolutely, and I think the other thing too to think about is, uh, rec. Um, department can grow itself in that if you have small fees that are reasonable, then that can help go towards paying somebody as well, so.
Yeah.
Uh, but we can, we can, I think we should have a really hearty, healthy talk around all of that at some point.
Let's talk, let's talk to the chairman, shall we?
I think that when the, um, rec commission ran a summer camp in Lee. I think it did pay for itself.
Yeah.
Oh, really? When was, when was that, Julie?
Oh, I have a list. Do you wanna look at the list? I, it was the list that I sent you, Katrina.
No, 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 I just wanna know, I just wanna know what timeframe it was.
I, I'd have to look, I'd have to look at the list. I don't remember what year it was. They were, as Mr. Bubby said. For many years, the recreation commission was. Very active.
Yeah, that was years and years ago. Oh, can you show it to us? This, whatever you're talking about?
Years and years, huh?
Years and years, yeah.
Is that two years?
That's years and years.
Years and years, okay.
Many years, they were very.
I've heard rumors of said camp and let me tell you, finding a place for your kids to go in the summer is really hard and incredibly helpful to have something like that.
So, can, can you see that or no?
Not yet.
No.
Okay, let me just.
There we are.
Hold on, let me go find, let me go find it.
Just to let you know, there's a new mental health program coming out. It's for parents who have to deal with their children all year long. Because so many parents are stressed out by all the things that they have to do now that, you know, with the COVID stuff in place and kids are doing school from home. There's a whole new thing of mental health for parents to deal with those particular issues.
Yep, we've been working on that here.
So, so can you see the list now?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
So, starting in nineteen fifty-eight. Um. So let's see, so here you can see. In nineteen seventy-seven, they built new bleachers, they had a skating rink, they offered tennis lessons. Seventy-eight was a women's exercise group, soccer, skating rink. Uh, yoga classes, cross country skiing.
Yeah, love it.
Nineteen eighty-four, women's exercise, yoga, basketball, aerobics, kinder size. Uh. Tai Chi, nineteen eighty-five, volleyball, children's Halloween party. Fitness classes, so it was definitely in the eighties.
Yep.
Yep.
Uh, definitely still, definitely still in the nineties.
They used to have basketball too.
And then right around the mid two thousands is when it started to peter out.
Well, if you look, we started to put so much money into ORYA and then all of a su- it was like nineteen ninety-five. When that happened and then now it all sort of.
Yeah, it wasn't ORYA.
Julie, can you, can you send me that, please?
Sure.
Yeah, send it to all of us.
Yep.
Yeah, there's, here's the trips to the, you know, was it ninety-three, all the trips that they use. But it comes from people that want to volunteer.
Right.
And if you don't have somebody running those things.
Right.
It doesn't happen, so.
I, I think what happened for, for whatever reason, the, the composition of the rec commission shifted.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and it, it moved from programming like you saw in the eighties and nineties. To developing sports fields at Little River Park.
Uh-huh.
So there, whoever was on, the people that were on the commission had a different focus.
Oh. And as we saw this last year, you know, the whole ice rink thing, that was wicked popular.
Oh, my gosh, yes.
You know, build it and they will come kind of thing.
Uh, yeah, as a parent, getting anything at all that your kid wants to get out and do is amazing and I think that, you know, that. That area right there is a lot and then if you add on the rest, you know, all the other generations. It's just so important to get out and move and if we're, you know, if our town values that and we're, and we're supporting that, that'd be big.
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you very much, everybody.
We're not done, we're not.
Scott, do you have, uh, do you have something else you wanna bring up for the town hall?
Well, I haven't done with all the things people have sent in.
We don't have a list, do we?
No, not yet.
No, we don't have a list yet, but I, I think we went down everything. I didn't hear anybody say we'll scratch.
We still have a couple more. Can I give you the rest?
All right.
So, we talked about, um, the idea of, of having a, well. My husband sent in the idea of having patsy passes, I'll just be honest, um. Uh, patsy passes, I've actually spoken to some, um, people that work on them and what that means is that it's. Uh, it's like an envelope in the building that actually conserves energy, so it increases the cost of the building five to ten percent. And then going forward, your energy expenditure is fifty percent less. For the life of that building, so that's one idea, you know, another idea is I've been looking into the prices of, you know, if we did start to go towards. Um, electric, you know, vehicles, then we would need a charging station. There's a lot of things that can speak towards what I have found in the people that I've, I've spoken to in the town, a care for the environment. And a care for saving money, so finding ways to. Put all that together so that you, so that you're making choices, especially as we're building new buildings and we're restoring old ones. That are using the least amount of energy and saving us money. Um, I, I don't mean doing crazy wild things, I just think things that make sense. If, if putting up a solar panel, we can get someone to help us pay for a huge portion of it. And then we get all that savings. I mean, let's look into it. So I think that environmental piece and the, um, conserving. Piece is important.
Yeah.
And then, I had a, I, I don't know, did you guys remember anything else that was said on the different sheets that I'm forgetting? Or is anyone else on? Online that is.
I remember the taxes from Mr. What is it, Barcy?
Yeah, I mentioned those.
Part of that, we kinda talked about that in another meeting because.
Um, yeah.
We're kind of frugal. It's the school district, you know, it's the elephant in the room kind of thing, you know. Even if we cut five percent, that's not gonna cut his taxes by five percent. That's, you know, it's only a small portion, so. And I think, and Julie's told us as well, but. She publishes at the end of the voter's information guide, do the percentage in terms of, and I don't know, maybe people don't understand it or whatever, but. You know, you'd do better to get five percent from the school than five percent from the town, so.
So we'll start a school board visiting group that goes and sits on school meetings, save, save the town money. I like that.
I, I don't know. The thing is, no matter, I think we did the calculation, I think Joe Ford did the calculation years ago. Um, and said, you know, eh, only a small percentage of, of Durham voters have to vote in a majority. And that overrides just the voters in Lee and Madbury, so.
Right.
You know, it's really convincing the Durham voters for something or not to do something, so. And that's.
So maybe we should have, um, we should have representatives like the senate for the small towns, like the small cities, and they each speak. On behalf of the towns.
I don't think that they are gonna want to, uh, renegotiate, what is it, the Occam's Law formula or something? I don't think they're gonna explore that, so.
So, I think the point is though, that I, I don't think any of us ever think that increasing spending is a good idea. I think that we just have responsibilities that need to be met and that's the challenge.
Yep. And I think some of us are still getting over in terms of we added those two new positions, the police and the fire department. You know, I didn't like to do them. Uh, from a cost point of view, but in terms of statistically and the, the, the data supported having those particular new positions there, so. You know, I'm still recovering from that.
Somebody mentioned that maybe they could do, um, sometimes there could be a share between, um. You know, towns where somebody's working and, and, you know, it's not such a huge distance, maybe, so there are options down the road and things.
Yeah, Scott's doing some of that. He's got some people that work full time in other departments and they're working part time for us, so he's doing some of that. But yeah, so, but I think the thing going forward is to look at the data and see what the data says. If we need a position, we need a position. We don't like in terms of spending wise, but if that's something that's needed, that's something that's needed. It's the same thing we had the discussion at the last meeting about Steve's people. I think the climate change in terms of staffing is changing. Uh, and I think we need to be flexible enough to say, hey, okay, we don't like to offer benefits to get people here, but if nobody's buying and we need the job done. We need to do something, so.
I spoke to him today, um, briefly and, and something I was noticing is that, you know, because he has so many departments and I've. Been on a lot of those, um, transfer station calls, learning about all the. Communication and stuff, I'm wondering if it would make sense to free him up if to have, you know, an assistant or somebody that is. Able to kind of do that real paperwork part time, just get all that stuff entered so that he's out there and he's able to do the work he needs to do. And then also, we obviously need to replace the transfer station employees.
Yep. Well, the, the other thing that you mentioned in terms of, you know, some trainees or apprentices for some of the stuff that they do there. You know.
I think the, I think the apprentice, the apprentice program. Uh, could work very well, uh, relative to, uh, you know, having a, if you would, a mechanic's assistant to help work on the machinery. It's a very wide range of machinery and it would be a really good training program, I believe.
I agree.
With a.
Yeah.
With a, and a transfer station.
Uh, Dave's Allen, boy, I don't remember if it's Tyler. Or Ben, one of them, cause I know Ben works for the fire department, I believe. But they went to, uh, diesel mechanic school. So I know there's ones in the area, so if anything, contact them and say, hey, we're looking for an intern, somebody, you know, that's gone through your program.
Right.
You don't have, they're having the on the job experience and just say, okay, come to work for us for a period of time. And, um. They can get trained or whatever, maybe they stay, maybe they don't, I don't know, but at least you can get somebody else in there.
That's the thing is that now you have an, you know, we have, we only have a few years to get this taken care of, so. You know, get on that and I was, you know, also Dover does, uh, um.
Oh, yeah.
I think there's different, you know, whatever, like, let's, let's make that as something we start and work on right away. But I'm wondering, you know, we've talked a lot about the buildings and how we need to have a plan for that is. And we have to think ahead, you know, if numbers change or what's the long term future, you know, if we're not doing that for our employees as well. You know, talking about, you know, do we have a part time person start a year before someone's set to retire, that kind of thing. I think maybe doing a long range plan on that, as like you are, like I said, with the buildings, might make sense.
Hmm.
And then we can really look at it.
That's fine, because it's better to plan than to say, oh my God, we need this now. Cause then you make bad decisions based on, you don't have enough time to actually ascertain what you actually need and what you can afford and stuff like that, so.
And it's easier to tell the people that live here, you know, we are gonna be having an increase in expense for these two years, this is why. And, you know, this year we're gonna increase it in this department because they have someone retiring and then this year it's gonna, you know, we kind of have. We start to really be able to communicate. I just don't like things that surprise people. Why did we add all these people, you know, but if we planned it.
Yep.
A little bit, it helps.
Yeah. So, yeah, so something like we're doing with the town buildings, do with the town employees, so.
Yeah, I could do that. I could, like, you're sharing that one. I could definitely do that and.
Yeah.
We can talk about it.
So, I don't remember if there's any other things, but we need to go down through this list and see what we're gonna.
Yeah, okay, I think that was everything I could think of. Yeah, okay. I think that was everything I could think of.
So in terms of, um, what do we want to target? And I think this is, I don't know if we want to do these singly, but you know, maybe Katrina focus on this. Karen focuses on this. I thought, whatever that happens to be, or if you want to work together, I don't have any particular, you know, desire one way or the other, but. Need to identify what we want to accomplish and what we can accomplish if we have time. Cause we can't work on all this stuff. We're gonna have to prioritize some of this stuff, so.
I think every one of us agreed communication was a, a vital one. And one of the ways to do so was, um, social media, especially Facebook. Okay, so that's one.
That's communication, communication within and without.
Exactly. So what, so.
Can that include the survey or not?
Yes.
I think the survey is important. That's my opinion.
So how about if we tie those two together?
Okay.
And what about contacting other, um, the other select people?
Well, with or without it being on the list, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and establish some, uh.
Yep.
So can we put that under your name?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
And I'll, I'll take over the helping with Facebook and the, we should probably have a group that works on the survey and. Um, Ms. Clever was talking about the survey department, so maybe we can look into that. Who, who wants to work on that? I would be happy, but let me know if anyone else wants to work on that.
Which, which, what are you, which one are you speaking of?
Getting started on the survey.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. That's, uh, well, and, uh, contacting the U N H survey, whatever, whatever.
Yeah, Mr. Smith. Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Brown, you're gonna talk to other select people?
Yes.
Great. And what else do we want to do for, um, oh, the, the welcome wagon idea, I think is something that could become like its own group. Is that something I want to just open up the idea to some?
Well, I think it still really does fall under the broad category of communication.
Yeah.
So.
So maybe just do some, um, some looking into if there's a, if there's a committee or a group that wants to work on.
You know, we, you know, we've touched on it in the past years, believe it or not, uh, on the welcome wagon. And there were some ladies that were receptive to it, but it just never, it just never took place. So I'd like to try it again.
So.
I think that's good.
So maybe that can be like the trails committee, you know, find somebody that's, you know, gut hole about it and let them run with it. You know, within, you know, parameters, but.
No, exactly.
Yep.
Do you wanna announce it in like the, in the e-cryer and at the select board meeting, talk about possibly, um.
Looking for volunteers.
Yeah. And then just cross post it on neighborly, cause that will get another group of people.
Well, I don't think it's gonna take all that long to start the Facebook page. I mean, that's, that's a day.
Okay, okay. Well, I just saying, get it out on social media because that's where people are, you know, browsing, so.
Right.
Or what is it? Now, Katrina grazing. The grazers, the grazers. The grazers and the lurkers.
What else goes under communication that we need to, oh, maybe, yeah, I don't know what else goes under that.
Should I scrub the phone directory?
Yeah, I think we start with the welcome wagon this year and maybe phone directory down the road.
The phone directory feels unwieldy.
Yeah.
And it already exists.
Yeah, just call Consolidated Communications and tell them you want.
Well, if it exists, if it exists, then I'll, can I pick a copy up from you tomorrow?
Uh, I'm not gonna give you my copy. You can call Consolidated and just say, I want a phone directory.
Okay.
Yeah, you're a customer, right? Mr. Brown?
I'm sorry?
You're a customer of Consolidated Communications?
Oh, sure.
Yep.
That's why you guys get a phone book and I don't. I don't even know what Consolidated Communications is. Do you, also, we have the, um, sustainability committee is working on a directory of businesses. So at least that's something that's being worked on and we can grow that maybe next year.
Well, that would be a component of the welcome wagon too, so you can tell businesses that are.
Okay, so what about then the, uh, town hall renovation project? How's that gonna come along, Scott?
Uh, we don't wanna do that. No, we don't wanna do that. That's, that's lame. I don't wanna. Now, that's, that's gonna be driven by what the select board wants to do in terms of moving forward. Because I think we need to determine what's on the list and what we're gonna fund and what we're not gonna fund.
That's right. We need to determine what's on the list. I think we've got to find that.
Yep. The other thing is, you've got some comments, I believe Paul sent in some things about. Why are we waiting nine years? Why don't we just do it now? I think that's something we need to ascertain, you know? Bond rates are excellent at the moment.
Yeah.
And, you know, nine years from now, they might be back into the fours, they might be still in the twos. I, I don't know. But, um, that's something we have to take a look at, cause we're doing this space out thing just based on the fact that that's when the lease is up. That we have with, uh, daily with the two extenders.
Right, but we're just spending money on something that we're not gonna keep at this point, so it's not saving us money.
Oh, yes. So, but the thing we tried to work into, the talent of Lee has been typically, we like to save for things and then do whatever it is.
Right.
Um, so that's what that model is based on. If the board comes back and say, hell no, we're gonna do, you know, push another bond out for whatever it is we have to do, that's something we need to determine.
And I think what we can say is, we could also say we want to do that, but we also understand that's not how we want to normally do things. And here's the plan we have, so this isn't the problem.
Yeah, well, I think when this, the survey we're talking about, I think you should have questions in there based on that particular thing.
Absolutely.
Because if people come back and say, hell no, you know, bonds are cheap, do it now, get done with it and let's move on.
Right.
Or they're gonna say, you know, I like the way, I like the plan that sets it out for nine years and I can see where we're going and we'll just save for it. I don't know where they're gonna land.
Well, we've, we've got a pretty clear charge for the, for the committee. And, and I really wanna see it come to fruition. Uh, we just, we seem to get off track every now and then. And also, to be honest, it looks to me like we're almost going head to head with the library committee over, over some of these issues. And it's slowing us down. Uh, I don't know.
I think, in my opinion, those two projects have to be more coordinated than they already are. Um, we kind of, the select board, what, last year, kind of set them off on their own little thing to do their own thing. And based on what we've come up with, the town hall renovation project, there's some things that need to be coordinated. Uh, and I think that's what's getting in our way. The other thing is, I had a conversation this morning, we were talking about lumber prices. There was a thing on CNN that, uh, there's, I didn't know this occurred, but there's a thing called lumber futures. Lumber futures are up seven hundred percent.
Yeah, it's bad.
So if their project, uh, was eight hundred thousand and then it gets scaled back to six, cause that's how much we said, you know, that's the money that they've got. That was in last year dollars. Now, what are they gonna be able to build? Like half of what they want to build?
There was a, uh, there was a, uh, post on Facebook that gave the, uh, last, I forget, number of months and years. On plywood and it's just, it's out of sight, so, uh, and it's not gonna, it doesn't look like it's gonna get any better anytime soon.
So I think, yeah.
So it might be beneficial for us to, one, delay it anyways, till the prices come down. They're thinking about twelve to eighteen months. But that, that makes it also in line in terms of the project that the town hall renovation committee has set in, in terms of doing the septic system, the well and the parking.
Right.
Those would dev tail quite nicely. But we're gonna get pushed back from the library trustees. They want to do it now, now, now. Heard what they said. So I think it's more the board has to say, no, this is what's gonna happen and this is how it's gonna happen. Versus them kind of, you know, driving the truck, driving the car.
I don't know if it's all that they need to do it now, 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 as much as that they, there's a, there's a feeling that I justifiably understand of it's never going to happen. So I think that's very different to say, look, we've actually laid it out and now you can go ahead and, and get the things you need in place. So when it's time to build, you're ready to go. But, but these are the things you need. And I think one of the things we noticed was with the North Point plan and things like that, there was a lot of money spent on convincing committees within our own town. To do things which, if we are just communicating better, we can save them a lot of money and the town a lot of money on that.
Well, we have, we have the joint committee coming up, uh, or the joint, uh, meeting coming up. We're gonna have to address it.
Yeah. The conservation commission had a meeting last night and we talked extensively about this. And one of the things, Karen's the one that hosts it for us, facilitates us, well, not facilitates, but helps us with it. And there was one thing that Karen said, which I had not heard before, but I guess she's talked to the trustees about it is. Um, her evaluation of the North Point versus the Joneson Beach. And what we heard from the library people was they wanted, um, the North Point people because they gave a more complete, you know, you know, proposal. And Karen says, well, you went back to North Point and got a revised proposal, you should probably do that with Joneson Beach. And they would have given you those extra things. And Karen said, in her opinion, the North Point one is over about ten thousand dollars more than Jonesa Beach, even with those other things added. And she says, why are they paying ten thousand dollars more to get the same kind of service? And I think that's one of the questions that needs to be answered, why? And I kept, told Karen, you know, I, this is the first time I've heard about that. And I understand, you know, what the library people's presented, but, you know, if we're gonna pay ten thousand dollars, why? You know, why? Are they that much better? I, I don't.
And is there a reason that they haven't been more specific in the previous, um, examples? And if we have more information ourselves, would they become more specific? And then I was also wondering, are there certain things that if we're gonna be putting buildings next to each other, that could be combined? And so that it's not just a library expense on its own?
Well, the parking, that's gonna be shared between multiple buildings. The well and the septic are gonna be shared with multiple buildings, so those central services.
If we have to pay somebody to go out there and put and do all that, the testing, then adding a couple more things, you know, that, to, to put the, some of those expenses together might be smart.
Yeah, okay. Are we, are we in good shape now?
We have the communication and town hall. What else needs to be on our list?
Well, communication and a building plan, because I think it's, isn't it broader than just town hall?
It, it is. I just wrote it down there.
Yep.
Building plan, I like that. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, cause it's more your number two than my number one.
I didn't put them in order of favorites.
Well, I'm just, in terms of reference, I think your number two is more what we want to say than my number one.
Oh, well, thank you. So what else do we want to have on the what has to happen this coming year? I think we're gonna talk about recreation in town.
Yep.
This coming year.
Yeah.
I'm happy to work on that. I'm already working on that.
Okay. Well, since you're their rep, that would be the best place for it to come from.
I mean, right, right.
Yep. Well, you said you had the conversation with them about that, so I assume they're amenable to, you know, just pursuing the idea of a coordinator for doing that kind of stuff?
Yeah, so the people I spoke to, I haven't spoken to the whole group yet, um, because I haven't, you know, I, different people have been on, so yes, absolutely. I think it's a conversation that is, would be welcome.
Okay, good. And also in terms of, I don't know if there's anything else at Little River Park that we need to look at, but I think we need to look at making that ice rink kind of permanent someplace. So that, um, people will, I think even after pandemic, if we have that particular service out there, I think people will be loving to use it. Would love to use it, so. I don't know if that's Little River Park or if it's still at the town, um, field. I, I don't know, but. Maybe that's something you guys can look at.
Yeah, absolutely. They were talking about that at the meeting last night and also talking about, um, some improvements to the playground and talking about different options. So there's a lot of, of good, um, things to go looking into.
Okay, alright. Yeah, and I don't know in terms of the ice rink, if they need, cause they're just, as far as I can understand, they're kind of winging it with what they had there.
Right.
So I don't know if we need some upgrades or.
Right.
I don't know.
Scott Nemitz, Steve Bullock and I had been looking into the ice skating rinks that you can purchase that kind of snap together. And actually, um, Scott Nemitz put one in his house.
Oh, cool.
Forget, I mean, it's, you know, it's maybe in the thousands of dollars.
But reasonable.
But, but not astronomical.
Alright, well, excellent. See, that's what happens when you get the group together to talk about different things. Because, you know, you said, let's say, okay, well, let's recreation work on that. Well, Julie, you're not part of that, so they wouldn't have known that possibly.
Right.
But I think that's one of the reasons I want everybody to get together on the nineteenth, because then you can hear different things and people have different ideas. And they can maybe come up with a solution. If anything, people get to hear all the information. One of the things that, uh, Dawn Jean said yesterday, she said, you know, why are they asking us to come to the meeting first? We don't know anything about the town hall renovation project. And I said, the wonderful thing about that is. The town hall renovation people can present what their plans are or what their thoughts are, then everybody gets to hear it all at once at the same time.
Right.
And then, because I think the important part is, everybody understands all these particular pieces of information, then you can make an informed decision. So. They'll come on the nineteenth if they're requested.
Should we add to the communication list too, um, about those, um, lunch meetings that were talked about with the department heads? Or more communication within departments? I don't know how we want to define, like, say that.
Cause at least what I've experienced so far, if one of the department heads has an issue, they usually contact whoever.
Right.
Particular person, um, and they talk about where it is. So I don't know, maybe that's working, maybe it's not working, maybe that's a conversation you can have at the first meeting to say, you know, this is what we're proposing. Do you guys value this? Is this something that's gonna work? Is this gonna be a pain? Uh, I don't know.
Should we not invite Mr. Bugby, that kind of stuff?
Yep. Well, I won't be coming anyways because Denise is not gonna provide cookies, so, you know, I'm not gonna show up anyways.
So that's already taken care of. Good to know. Alright, so what else is gonna be on our this year to do that we're gonna check in on and make sure is happening?
Well, I mean, you, so you've got communication, which has a lot of levels and components to it. The building plan obviously is huge and then increasing recreational opportunities for all ages and abilities.
A lot.
Yeah, well, I think that's gonna take a lot of time.
Yeah. I, how about if we just make that our tier one and we can put the rest of the stuff on tier two? Not that we're getting rid of it or not doing it, but let's focus on the tier one stuff and see how much progress we can make with that.
I think that's great. I, I, unless we're, does anyone see anything or can anyone remember anything that we're missing or shouldn't, or haven't made a focus decision?
No, I think that's fine. We need to, we need to get started on something. That's as good a list as any.
Good, and everyone has something to do.
Right.
Alright.
Can I bring up something? And I don't know if the chief's gonna bring it up later, but the police chief called me and I don't know if he called the two of you.
No.
And hopefully he did. No. The police chief and, well, U N H is having six graduations. Um, in May, the week after next, starting on the. Oh, hold on. Starting on May.
The five graduations in one day or something?
No, no, they're spread over multiple days. It's starting like the twentieth or the twenty first of May and it's gonna go on for like three days. There's like six of them they're having. So the police chief has been asked to, um, um, provide some services to them. And one of the things that he says in his contract is we, he can only work so many extra hours. And he wants to make sure that, um, if he has to go over, that we're okay with that. Um, so he called me. I thought he was gonna call the two of you, um, but we need to like have a conversation about that. Cause I don't know when he has to get back to and say, yes, I can work those particular things or no, he can't. So. Well, I don't know if you guys are okay with it, if he works over a few more hours, cause Julie, remind us, what's the number he can work?
That it's, he doesn't have a contract, well.
He has a.
He has a special written agreement with the select board regarding special duty. Um, to be very honest, Mr. Bubbe, that's been modified many times.
Yep.
Um, and I just don't recall where it sits right now. You want me to see if I can pull it up, pull up the most recent?
If you could. I just, I think we should have a conversation about it. I'm okay with it, just as long as he's like, I wanna say it's like twenty hours or something. I don't remember exactly the number, but if he goes over like two hours, I, I don't have a problem with that.
And is he lightening his load on, on the other end?
He's taking vacation as far as I understand, so.
Okay.
I think, you know, I'm sorry, but you know, the guy. We have, we have a, a, a kind of a co-op program with the surrounding towns with, with, uh, police assistance and so on. They called them, they said, hey, we, we need coverage for this. Our answer should be yes.
I agree.
And, you know, it's, it's just part of the job. If he's, if by X amount of time, he's over by X amount of time. Yes, we should do it. We should pay him.
Well, he's not doing it as a lead police officer, he's doing it as a person.
Right, right.
I have, um, one from two thousand eighteen, Julie.
Yeah, I've got the one that's dated May twenty first.
Yep.
Okay, hold on, let me just do the share screen thing again.
Say that again.
Okay. So this is his current agreement. Um, he can't work more than twelve hours per month.
Okay.
On off hours.
And this would be twenty.
Yeah, and then it, you know, talks about what the hours are and so on and so forth. Um.
So he's doing it as a special. So he's doing it as a special duty, not as, so.
Right, so we're just saying, yes, he can do that. This time because of the need that they have.
He's a policeman.
I think that sounds good.
So, can I make a motion that we allow the police chief to, uh, do the UNH graduation? Special duty for the weekend of, uh, May twenty, twenty first, twenty second?
I'll second it.
Graduations.
I'll second it.
All right. Roll call? Yep.
Oh, roll call?
Yep.
Yep.
Selectman Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Bugby?
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes. So it passes.
Julie, can you notify the chief that we've done that particular vote, so he's all set for that particular service?
Yep. Can I ask an off topic question about, that is about communication though? So there's a couple of kids in our town and our area that are doing some different things that I'm very excited about and that. Go towards this idea of volunteering and bringing the community together and, um, kind of opening up our doors a little bit, is it okay if they came and had like a three to five minute? In the beginning of the select board meeting, um, spiel that they shared with us about what they're doing? I'm thinking of like Gibb and his volunteering, one can, can make a difference, that kind of thing.
We can, he can do it on a public comment if you want.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, that's, okay, so just, I'm just, because then now you get the kid involved, they've now been part of the select meeting and their parents probably gonna come and maybe some of their friends, so I just think that's an interesting way to.
No, that's good, that's good.
Okay, cool.
Excellent, I'll schedule it.
Great.
I'm okay with it, I assume Mr. Brown's okay with it.
Yes, I'm fine with it.
So.
I'm fine with it.
Spices up the meeting a little and adds, adds a different, um, angle and maybe gets us in the right mind frame, thinking about each other.
And I will follow up with you, Katrina, um, what's happening with the change of the flow in terms of the, the office building? I know the DOT did whatever they did and they said we can use the one twenty five entrance, but when is Mr. Daley gonna do, you know, those changes?
Me or Ms. Glover?
Ms. Glover, I'm just following you.
I was gonna say, wait a minute, where's he going, where's he going?
I was just following Katrina in terms of she did an off topic, so I'm doing an off topic.
Oh, they're, oh, okay, that makes sense, thank you.
So far as I know, um, it's still sitting with DOT, I think, um, Mr. Shut has been out of the office and he's the point person on it.
Okay.
So we just need to follow up again with, um. With DOT and see whether he's back and, and working on it, so.
And furthering that particular point, when that gets changed, uh, will Mr. Daley allow us to put a sign on one twenty five, so?
Yeah, we think, yes, we've been talking about that all along and they're gonna move the sign, I was about to point, look, look over there, can you see?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
They're gonna move the sign that's out on one twenty five further down, so people don't get confused and then we're gonna get our own sign on one twenty five.
Okay, all right, good.
We're also making a few tweaks to the signage, um, on Buzzaline.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I'm, I, I love the truckers, but I'm getting tired of driving through yesterday, well, was it yesterday? Yeah, wasn't it yesterday I came to you guys?
Yeah.
Um, they had some trucks dropping stuff off and I had to sit there and wait because they had the whole thing blocked off.
Yep.
And the guy come up and talked to me, he was very nice, he says, sorry, you know, we're trying to unload these trucks and we're backed up and whatever, I says, okay, how long you have, well, five, ten minutes. It was about seven, but you know. You know, that's just like.
It'd be cool not to have.
Patient, but.
I've never had that happen and I.
Oh, really?
And I come here five days a week.
But do you drive in and out during the day, because I'm always going in and out during the day, not.
Usually not during the day.
Right, that's what, it's always if it's like in the middle, if it's like ten or two-ish, it's like, oh, I'll be here for a little while.
I've, I've never had a problem going in and out.
Yeah, well, I was tempted to turn around and just go out the other way to one twenty five, but.
Yeah.
That would be the time that somebody's sitting there looking and said, oh, look, Selectman Bugby's not doing what he's supposed to be doing, he's a bad boy and I don't need that, so.
Um, I have a question that's also not necessarily related, I don't know where we, I could stick it and pretend it was part of this, but. I'm noticing that in the town office building, nobody has any art. Is that because in the town hall, we didn't have any art or anything interesting going on and do we have any budget or open?
Well, clearly you have not been in Linda's office.
Oh, okay, all right, no, I haven't.
Uh, Karen took a few things, I think some photographs. From, um, the old town hall and that's in her office, but no, there were photographs and maybe some old maps, but there was not any artwork.
One, one of the things that might be cool is we've got old photos of the town hall, town hall from nineteen oh nine. I wonder if the town would be amenable if we provided those digitally and then we just had some prints made and just put them out, you know, maybe old, not necessarily just the town hall, but other old photos. Kind of like if you've been to Sunny's, they have photos of the town of Lee, old ones, which is kind of cool, but if you're sitting out there waiting for Denise on her call. And you can't, she's not servicing you, or maybe that's just me, you can at least look at the photos and say, oh, that's.
Just you.
That's cool.
What?
Yeah, every time I come there, you're on the phone doing something or eating food or.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understand what you just said, Selectman Bugby.
He's never had that experience, it's totally unknown to him.
Oh, my goodness, I can't wait till I'm a chairperson again, so she gives me a little respect, geez.
Ouch.
What about all those, we have a lot of those.
Too late, Mr. Bugby.
We have a lot of those old pictures on the, uh, upper floor of the public safety complex too, don't we, that's unused.
I mean, I'm not necessarily only thinking old art, also maybe, I'm just, I don't know, just if people wanna, I mean, if, if, if nobody, if you don't want anything in your office, that's fine, I'm just asking.
You're looking for real artwork.
You know, with the zen.
Perfect, I love it, then you should keep it that way.
Minimalism.
Perfect.
I'm just, I'm just thinking about that outer waiting rooms, that's what I'm thinking.
All right, I like that and I like that being lean.
We just have to make sure that we use the command picture hanging strips, because we don't want to put holes in the walls.
There we go, that's what the problem is.
You didn't notice my artwork of.
I loved your artwork, I was thinking we need more.
Daughter made me artwork.
You got a picture of your dog over there, don't you, Denise, someplace over there?
Yeah, I have a picture of my dog.
So, so here's where I am, I'm hungry.
All right.
And, and I'm gonna go.
Yep.
I'm gonna go eat dinner, so if you don't mind, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting, y'all can just stay and talk and whatever, I'm gonna.
It would still be a meeting, there's still two of them.
Right, so we gotta go, so that's fine, I just, it was an observation, I just wanted to know if we could help anyone if they were feeling like they weren't allowed to or whatever, just let them know, feel free to. Make it your home.
Thank you.
All right.
Perfect.
Good evening, everybody.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.